And our first order of business is Cora Keller from the Centerville Library. I'll come right up here. Cora's my new friend.
Yes.
We met working the polls together last fall.
14 hours together.
Yeah. Joe Morfalis.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm at the Galloay Center this morning.
Oh, yeah?
Drop by.
Thank you.
All right. Nice to see everybody here today. All right, I'm here to talk about the project proposal we put before you about a month ago now. Current project started back in 2018 in various iterations that we went through here. I think they got me on 2020 and they said, get ready to start. Well, 2020, 2021, 2022. It, you know, and we've had to change so much because just the funds that we had achieved were not enough to reach our end goal. But the current project list is a culmination of many years of fine tuning and community, staff, and trustee feedback. So that's what we're running with here currently. Just a show here, how many people are here to support the library? I see so many people and we would have had more if it weren't for the time unfortunately. Eight o'clock on Wednesday isn't the best time to get all of our educator friends out. But I do definitely appreciate the ones that are here with us now to show support. So, in response to the changing building project, we had to take a hard look at our priorities and what that would mean to the community. That's one thing that all the delays have given us here. So what we are proposing to do with the funds has been gone through and gone through and gone through to the point of, you know, we know exactly what we're looking at here now. So one of the things we've looked at was the amount of people coming in to work on computers as outlined in A1 there, your board having your packet there. And despite the increase in collection used as a whole, as you'll see on A2 on the second page, you know, it just tells us that we've seen a lot more people not coming in to use the computers as much as to look for a space to use the wifi and use their computers. So we'll get to that later in the project. But that is definitely something that we had to consider while building this project. Some things in the survey that are included that we had originally given out, you know, had to be taken out for budgetary reasons, but what is in there currently was also in that survey you would see after the pictures there. So again, been through many iterations, many, many fine tuning points, but that's, that's definitely was a factor in making our decision here, giving people their space. So, yeah, at this point, I'd like to direct everybody back to A3 and A4 on the back of the surveys sheet there. And you can see that the community survey really does reflect that in the amount of approval we had for all of the project. But the negatives that we had received mostly around taxation would be eliminated with our current proposal and that the tax impact would just stay constant for not raising anybody's taxes to accomplish this. Really, that were, those were the only negative responses was no one wanted to raise taxes. So I feel like we have walked that line sufficiently and will still be able to benefit the community. We came up with our current project list by staff survey, community survey, input, as well as looking at current library trends. If you go to any library in the state, you'll find contact lists as well as motion to check out. We wouldn't change anything with staffing, the layout, you know, people are still going to be talking to people, just that there would be that extra option if budgets approved. So we definitely want to, want to look at that in keeping with current library trends. Another thing that would be added here would be meeting rooms, again with the space, people coming in with their laptops, you know, you might not want to sit to the guy, next to the guy on the phone or, so it might be a bit of a distraction. So that would help us out in getting rid of that distraction. Definitely improving, by doing that, improving the patron experience. Another thing we would look at is ADA doors for the bathrooms. Currently, we don't have any of this current round of funding to take care of that. So we would be able to serve more people. Lighting the exterior building at night would make the ground a safer place to be, but it would also accentuate the, you know, the old beauty of that building that we definitely want to show off. So, you know, someone traveling down the highway, they'll see not only that we have restaurants and we have fun things to do, but we also know we can take care of our, our history and our culture out there. We'd also like to preserve the historic building for future generations. Some of this funding would go to helping to not only restore some areas, but also protect the areas we have. You'll see in the pictures there, if you flip to the second page, you can see where the exposed part is kind of degrading and there's bird's nests and the eaves and just, in doing this, we would definitely be able to fix all those problems as well and get our building back up to 100%. So, yeah, we would definitely want to take care of that as well. In conclusion, it's sad that we've lost a lot of library patrons due to COVID for various reasons. But libraries remain the only free resource of materials, educational or otherwise, that everybody has access to no matter what. I wanted to quote a Chuck Avery post here as well. He's a well-known resident around town, across town and away. A well-maintained, fully-staffed and stockpiled library is a reflection of what the community, what end of the community is important. Money invested in acquisition and dispersal of knowledge is always money well spent. That's what I had.
That's awesome. We understand about taking care of big old buildings.
Yes.
We just redid all the restaurants in the courthouse and the exterior thing and that. So we understand it's needed.
Morrison Reeves is going to do something as well. Seems like everybody's tackling projects, so we're definitely glad we can tackle our own project as well. I do definitely appreciate all of your support.
Thank you for telling us all about it and having this nice book for us to look at. So we have a resolution to allow the library to issue the bond. Basically a reissuance of a bond. And we just need a motion to approve the resolution and it was properly advertised.
I think you need to have a public hearing.
Do we have to have a public hearing? Okay, sorry.
I got confused. I thought this was Dublin.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we, okay, so I will open a public hearing at this time. Do we have any comments from the public? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved to second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. So I will entertain the motion with two.
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Resolution passes. How many copies do you need signed?
I gave everybody a copy.
I know, but how many do you need signed?
Two.
Two? Okay. Can I have yours?
Here as well.
I see it.
Oh. Here I have one. Okay. That's what we need. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We will get these to you and you can grab them in a few minutes if you want to.
Then you all can keep the boxes. Thank you.
There you go. There's two copies. All right. Next up, we have Tim Smith. We ask him to come and talk about the, the mobile home legislation that was recently passed.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Nice morning out. Uh, yes, I had several inquiries about the recent annually assessed mobile homes. We refer to them as AAMHs downstairs, just for, to be a little quicker about it. But mobile homes that are, that still have titles active and typically are either in mobile home parks or they can be on real estate that is leased or rented. I know there's been a lot of talk about it, so I was asked my stance on it. So I offered, I belong on, on email, we have 92 county assessors and we oftentimes will send out questions to one another of particular issues we're dealing with or, in assessing, there seems to always be something comes up that there's not a quick answer for. So we, we kind of glean off one another. So I talked to a couple of councilmen that had called, I believe Tev Plaster may have asked as well, if I recall. I said I would send out an email. So I got about 15 responses or so from county assessors and I posed the question as what are your individual counties doing? What are your councils? How are they looking at this particular legislation? Overwhelmingly, everyone is totally opposed to it and primarily based on the same stance that I take is the fairness or actually inequity or unfairness of this particular legislation if it were to pass. That, that was the, the overall response that I got. I, I wrote down a point of interest here. My main, my main reasoning for, for exempting these personal property mobile homes, again, is inequity. My stance on the proposed county option annually assessed mobile home exemption appears to mirror the general ideology of my constituents. The stance that this exemption if implemented will create unfairness to other property owners, especially other owners of real property mobile homes. Not sure if you're aware, but annually assessed mobile homes are already assessed at a much lower rate than what mobile homes, if you retired the title and it went on to real estate, if it's retired, if the title is retired, goes on to real estate, I must price it as a stick-built home. That's by statute. So typically, what we try to do is downgrade those to, to try to make up the difference in it. Annually assessed mobile homes are assessed by NADA or JD Power Pricing Guide, which is like a blue book similar to what you have for vehicles. And they have square foot rates and we go through that process. So my, my thought is, is if you have in an area, and this would happen, whether it be Wayne County or whether it be Henry County or whether it be Lake County, you would have two homes that are very similar within a reasonable distance from one another, they're already being assessed totally different, at least the dwelling part, because you've got one at NADA, JD Power, one stick-built, Indiana cost tables, and is trended according to the market, whereas the other one is not. That's already creating a little bit of unequity. And to exempt that, you would have a home exactly the same here and this person's paying taxes and this one is not. I just feel like that's, I just don't feel there's a fairness there from my standpoint. With that being said, I did look yesterday, Wayne County currently has, per property class, 968 records. There's probably a few more than that with property classes changing over time of mobile homes that are on real estate or with retired titles. And we have 635 records of annually assessed mobile homes or those with, that's assessed as personal property. So again, it's going to create, my, my main point is fairness. Another point I thought was interesting that was brought up by the Stark County Assessor. Their county has already voted this down. She brought up a valuable point. She says, she, she feels like there might be a major influx of personal property mobile homes into a county and if a county would adopt this particular measure. Another point is, and I believe it was brought up in the last meeting council had concerning this issue, was the taxing unit losses. I, I do realize that the revenue from these is probably significantly less than what real estate might bring in, but the taxing units would suffer quite a bit from those things. That, that's pretty much my main, my main stance is this, the inequity of the taxation.
So I read all those things you sent out. They were very helpful. I appreciated that. One other thing, a lot of people said, if you institute this and there's no tax on mobile homes anymore, there's going to be an influx of more mobile homes.
Yeah, exactly.
Coming in and that's probably not something that we really want.
I spoke with, most of the correspondence I have is from email. I did call all the counties that order us to see what their thoughts were. I think George Castor from Randolph County responded. I talked to Jeff Coleman from Fayette County. He's, he's on Pita Bowa for many years in Fayette County and he's now county assessor. He didn't allude to who or how many people, but he said that there's some people already prepared if this happens in that particular county. They said if we have to take it to Supreme Court, we will, or at least push to because of, once again, the fairness of the, of the tax. So, so anyway, he, he said that he's prepared to, when they have their meeting, he said, I'm going to oppose it simply based on that.
Tim, I do have a question. So when the legislature talked about the bill, did the assessors group not go and testify?
Yes. Trying to think, Stacy O'Day from Allen County, she's the liaison to, and they, she, they, she opposed it from, from day one. So.
So the legislature, the legislators have heard your, your group's.
I would.
Comments.
Well, I wasn't there, but I would assume that they did.
And I'm sure the, the treasurer's group did the same thing.
Yeah.
And I, I think that it comes down, there, there's different, there's different issues. I get what you're saying about the fairness, because if I live in a brick and mortar home, how come the guy in the mobile home doesn't have to pay property taxes? I get that part. But the other part, I think there's different issues is that, and why it was brought up, because on the treasurer's side, having been a treasurer for four, eight years and in that office a long time, as you know, a lot of people in this room know that, it is so hard to collect those because a lot of times, also as you know, it's billed in my name this year, it's billed in my husband's name next year, on and on. So you're, we're looking at how hard is it to collect what we've built? And in some cases, we never do collect it. So weighing out what is it costing the county to implement and do that, aside from the fairness issue, is what is it costing us? And this group looks at fiscally what is it costing us, you know, to, to collect this? And I believe the county really doesn't get anything for that. Now, when it goes to the units, that unit is divided into the schools and the libraries and, you know, the township and, and all that stuff, so.
Yeah, I, I would agree with you. I was just giving, just quickly giving my point of view on the fairness. I understand there's pros and cons probably to everything. And, and I certainly can see that I've had several talks with Nancy Funk about this. I can certainly see some of those points. I can't pretend to tell you I understand everything about tax levies and all that sort of thing, and I guess it does not supposedly affect that, but the taxing units, I would think that would be kind of a major hit to at least a couple of the units because most of the monies that are collected go that way. But just in a general sense, that's, that's my stance. I just, and again, you're talking about a brick and mortar home, that's unfair to them as well, but I'm thinking about mobile homes themselves, the thousand or so that we have that have retired titles that have a house that's very similar to ones that if this was passed, they wouldn't pay taxes and this one would.
Right, but they also have real estate that goes with it. That's the part of the difference, correct?
It is the difference, but the home is exactly the same. I know one of the arguments early on was, is that, that most of the mobile homes annually assessed are under the $80,000, which is affected, that affects the legislatively, the business personal property. I would argue with that simply because that business personal property that creates an income, that produces a product, that provides a service, whereas this is a home that you live in. So I, I just, I never did put a lot of weight into the argument of the under $80,000 personal property, argument that was brought up early on. So like I say, I understand the pros and cons of it. You know, it could be, it could be a savings here on other units, but at the end of the day, where's the fairness? So.
Tim, I have a question.
I think it. I think it's kind of ironic that it would come before us and we would be voting something that actually doesn't really affect us to a large extent. It affects the various, you know, I think Richmond was 98,000, something like that?
Yes.
But even the, even the small towns, even if it's six or eight thousand, that's six or eight thousand that mean a lot to those communities.
Right.
So I, I agree with Tim, both from the fairness standpoint and as far as the other communities are, are concerned as well.
Yeah, I don't think it would be fair for us to make a decision without talking to those people first and seeing.
Tim, my question was, you said, how many counties did you reach out to? Do you know?
Well, I sent them out to all 92. I'd have to look at the list. I believe it was seven, 16 or 17 that responded by email. And I can send you the list if you'd like it.
And you said overwhelmingly, most of those counties said that they were not for this?
Yes. There was one that said, on a personal note, he said, I wish they'd go away because I don't want to deal with them. I mean, at least he admitted it. And there's part of me that would say, yeah. You know, it would be having to deal with mobile home park owners, getting, getting the reports in every year. It's, it's aggravating and then trying, like Kathy alluded to the fact that you have owners changing every year, mobile homes being moved in and out. It is a, it's a nightmare to try to keep track of it. But yeah, there was 16 or 17 and he's the only one that really said, yeah, I'd like it to go away, but I agree with you that I just don't see how it's fair to these other owners.
So that's a small percentage out of the 92 counties?
Yeah, exactly.
But every one of them said they did not see an advantage in doing this, correct?
Not, not that I know of, the ones I talked to.
So it'd be fair to state that if any of the counties felt that this was a benefit to them, they would have enacted this legislation?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Tim, I noticed in your email, you sent us a county that turned collection over to a collection agency rather than run it through the treasurer's office? I think that's something we would need to look at to relieve the pressure on the treasurer's office, try to collect this. The collection agency is collecting a fee from the taxpayer too. So would they, no, no money still that out of the county budget. We'd collect taxes for, there's cities in the other towns and stuff where they put a lien on a property or something, we'd collect that tax too and people get any of that.
Yeah, that was the Stark County Assessor and her name, Michelle Shelton.
We do have those recourses. You can send it to judgment, you can have the mobile home tax sale, which we do every year and have for several years. I think we're still the only county in the whole state that does that, but those are the recourse spelled out in statute.
And we discussed this at workshop a couple of weeks ago. And I mean, if the, if the sale costs too much money, just don't have the sale. It's not that beneficial to anybody, so we could cut that out if there's not to. But I don't, I don't think that we need to do anything today if we want to leave things like they are.
The only thing I will comment to what Beth just said about the tax sale, if you don't have it, then you're back to the fairness if you issue. You would sell my home if I didn't pay taxes. Why wouldn't we sell theirs? That's, that's the only thing about that.
She was just complaining about the cost of the sale. And so I think, yeah.
Well, the easy thing would be is for the BMV to take this back with a title, but again, I don't think that's going to happen. It seems like an easy fix to me, but the powers that be seem to think that's not a good idea.
So to follow up on Tony's comments about the other taxing units that receive this money, I don't know if they've been notified to this other than through the paper or something, but I would like to hear their, their thoughts and concerns about this.
I believe it was Diane Baker from Union County that I mentioned that to, because I called her on the phone and I was asking her, and when I mentioned the taxing unit, she said, I never gave that a thought. She said that's a, that would be destructive to a couple of her units, so.
And I want to say, and I don't know if any of you know for sure, when Nancy, when Nancy brought figures that she had before, I don't know if that was the total and then you broke it down into like the library, the school, that, that was just the total for that area. That wasn't like all that. I'll just say 90,000 went to Richmond schools. But I'm not sure that that was broken down. I think she just had the total and then it had to go, what went to the school, what went to the library. So we might want to double check that.
Well, we need to get clarity on that.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, I just feel that we should not act on something that affects all these taxing units without them having at least the opportunity to have input.
The legislation just says we can do this if we want to.
Yeah, it's an option.
Yeah, it's an option. Because we don't want to do it, we don't have to hear from anybody or change anything without a motion to, you know, move forward with trying to do this, then it'll just die and we'll just keep things like they are.
I really think we need to look at that option of a collection agency collecting this tax if at all possible, rather than burden people on the county, try to collect it, not get any benefit out of it. So that's, to me, sounds like a pretty good option.
Yeah, I thought Stark County, again, they voted this down and there's also a couple other measures that they, they placed that, or at least they have for, I think with an attorney and a committee about changing some of their policies on, on mobile homes. I'm not sure that that would be, if you read it, that'd be an option even to consider, but, so I thought Stark County was interesting on how they dealt with this as a whole.
Commissioners come to us with a recommendation we'll consider and if there's anything they want to change as far as policies go.
I'll find out anything else, I'll be, I'll try to share if I find out anything more.
Thank you, Tim. Thanks for.
Thank you.
That was very beneficial. We do have one thing, that Dublin Public Library has a board member that needs to be appointed. Amber Gabbard has volunteered to be on the board and we just need a motion to. Amber Gabbard has volunteered to be on the board, and we just need a motion to appoint her to the Dublin Public Library.
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. And next up, we have Beth Fields with, and in her local agreement for Cambridge City.
Good morning.
Good morning, happy May. As I have in the past, I have an interlocal agreement today between Wayne County, Indiana, and the town of Cambridge City. I'll, I won't go through the whole zip, the investment plan, how many boards it was approved by. I think we all know that story. This documentation memorializes the funding source, which is ARBA. It came together through the strategic investment plan through community input. It was approved by the city and town boards, commissioners, council of how that money will be used. So, this documentation will just allow Wayne County to write a $10,000 claim to Cambridge City. Their project is upgrades to their park and playground. Our $10,000 will be put into the patricity crowd raising fund. Once Cambridge City reaches the 50,000 mark, that money will be matched by IHCPA, and they will have 100,000 or more to do upgrades to their park. And at this point, commissioners have not signed this yet, we kind of flip flopped, because council is being first today, commissioner second. This has been approved by the Cambridge City Town Council. I have two copies, if you don't mind. I'll start them with.
We have a motion to.
Motion to approve the interlocal agreement with Cambridge City, Sergeant.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Thanks to Beth.
Regarding the ARBA financials, I received Jeff Plaster's counsel. We just gave you a report, April 17th, there's been one payroll, two ordinary claims since then, so there's really been no change. So, unless you have questions, that's all I have.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's time for commissioners' comments. Are we going to do T first?
Please.
Mr. Higginbotham. It's getting smaller and smaller, I like it.
Hopefully, hopefully it will start adding to it here a little bit. Again, just looking at your biweekly changes on that first group there, the, I did meet with the contractor who is handling the generator project, the new generator installation. He did show me a series of emails and correspondence back from the company that is providing the new generator, and I'm pretty comfortable now that the, most of the delays are actually on the manufacturer. There's a component of this particular generator that comes from another subcontractor that has slowed up the production of the generator, and so the projected ship date of the new generator is July 31st. The technology in this room, as you know, that you can tell that the microphones aren't on this morning, we've had, we've attempted a number of times to, to contact the contractor who was doing the technology in here, and it's just like he's dropped off the face of the earth. He's not responding to any emails. Some of the phones that, phone numbers that were given to us, they come back with a message that it's not taking messages any longer. So, we've engaged another, another contractor, from a local contractor, he was here yesterday, and so we'll, we'll get back on track to finish up the rest of the technology in this room. Remember, we're wanting to put a microphone over this podium, and a software that would allow us to control the, the system from, from a tablet, wherever we're sitting in the room. So, I'll have more information as we go forward, but that's why you're not hearing any sound this morning.
So, just a quick question about the remaining balance, like, we don't owe Batman anything else, is the money that's in the balance, we can use to pay the other person?
Yes, yes. And, and I did take inventory, I think we've gotten everything that we've paid for, so in my mind, we owe this current one nothing.
Okay.
The magistrate's window replacement that has been installed, and so that is back to the safety level that should be, we're waiting on the tint. You know, this is the first floor courtroom, and so we have those windows tinted, so you can't see in from the outside, but the, the window has been installed and waiting on the tinting to be installed. We did repair that generator test panel last week. That was a process that was choreographed, you know, between 911, we had to move them out of the 911 center, into the mobile command center and shut down the servers, but that repair did go well, and gets back online as it should be. The new, a new project is the courthouse entrance. This is the area between the two airlocks, where this is a marble floor that over the years, it's basically crumbling, and they'll remove that marble, put a new bed underneath it, and replace that marble. And that'll be done on a weekend, because we, obviously we just can't close the front, front door of the courthouse, so that'll be scheduled on a Friday and finish on Sunday night. And that one, that one will be paid for out of the Q court, but. And then, the Coleman roof, we're waiting on LWC to prepare the documents for us to put that out for bids. And then, same information that I gave you the last time on the First Bank Expo Hall in VAC, the subcontractor doing the duct, duct work, that, those items are supposed to be delivered next week, and so that project should wrap up shortly thereafter. And then the annex sub panel, that too was replaced at the same time we did the generator test panel replacement, because we had to have a temporary generator to run those pumps at the same time, so they did both of those projects at the same time. And then, the, the, I say, I titled that as Annex Landscaping, but that's also hardscape as well, that'll be the front plaza of the courthouse. So, LWC is also preparing documents for that, for us to look at. So, that'll be an upcoming project for, for commissioners and council to look at. And again, as always, in the lower right hand corner, are your fund balances. Any questions?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Plaster.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. We're ready for your short comments. You told me they were going to be.
Not going to set the stage for me, thank you, Beth. Start your clocks now.
Okay.
Couple of things. Number one, very happy to report that Governor Oliver P. Morton has had his finger and thumb on his right hand reinstalled, so after 30 years, he is whole. I want to.
Slow regeneration.
Yes, something like that, like a lizard's tail. We have some private donors who are, are paying for that activity out of private funds, and should be completed yet this week, so when you get a chance, go shake hands with Governor Morton. Actually, shake hands, we want him to keep his finger and thumb. We have been, begun working with Kevin McCurdy, who actually was in here a little, a little bit ago, supporting the library project, probably, but we're working with him on a site plan for, for the courthouse and annex blocks, and we'll keep you posted on, on where we're at with that. Our industrial park, Cambridge City now has applied for an EDA grant to help hopefully pay for the new water tower, that is part of the water system at the industrial park that needs to be upgraded, so we're working with them on that application. We actually have, the EDC and the county agreed to pay for the grant writer for this project, so that we could get that off the ground. This morning, the Wayne County Foundation will be submitting Wayne County's letter of intent for Okra's Stellar Pathways program. It's, it's similar in nature to, to the HELP program, but it, it has the same kind of data collection, community input, planning process that we went through with HELP. We want to identify additional projects and programming that, that people feel are needed in Wayne County. Have a slightly different set of, of communities that are participating. If you'll recall, Cambridge City and Dublin, by virtue of the fact that they receive between them a million dollars of community development block grant money through the HELP program, they are ineligible to participate in the Stellar Pathways, which also is primarily money from community development block grants. So, we have, this time, Centerville, East Germantown, Economy, Fountain City, Greens Fork, Hagerstown, Richmond, Wayne County, and then the Wayne County Foundation will be the lead applicant in, in this process. So, four new communities that were unable to participate for one reason or another in the HELP program, will now be participating in this Stellar Pathways program. The applications are due today. We should find out in 30 to 60 days whether we're selected as one of the finalists. If we are selected as a finalist, the foundation will receive a $50,000 grant to hire consultants to assist with the planning process that will go through about November of this year, at which point, a strategic investment plan will be shared with, with Okra. And Okra, from the four finalists, they will select two communities that will be designated as the Stellar Pathways communities. That, if, if that does happen, that will result in somewhere between seven and eight million dollars of grant money, primarily from community development block grants, excuse me, but there are seven or eight partners at the state level that will each be contributing resources in one way or another. So, a total of about seven to eight million dollars of grant money available. You just heard the, the report from Beth, we're making progress on implementation on HELP. The, so far, East Germantown and Economy have both met their $50,000 goal of fundraising, so they have been awarded the $50,000 match from the Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority. So, in East Germantown, they're already under construction. Economy is moving in that direction. Cambridge just launched their program. Dublin and Milton are about halfway through their fundraising campaigns, and they have raised about half of the, of the money necessary to, to make the match, so good progress there. We did last week, launch the downtown revitalization component. Steve Higginbotham and Beth Fields are, are coordinating that. We sent out letters announcing the grant potential to every business in the designated areas. Each town has designated their own area that's eligible to receive funds. It has to be a for-profit business, primarily on the Main Street of each of those towns. Richmond's looks a little different in that it goes beyond Main Street, and it also includes the Deep Oak District. Everyone who is eligible has been notified, and the application process goes through the 1st of July, so about two months for, for folks to, to complete their application. The county is contributing $1 million, that will be spread among all of the communities that are participating. The city has contributed a million dollars of their own, which will all stay within the city of Richmond, in their designated area, but Beth and, and Steve are coordinating the whole program, so that will be happening shortly.
What's the match for the business owner on that?
It is 75 from, from the grant, and 25% match. So, they can get up to $100,000, which would require a $33,333 match. So, we hope to give you positive updates on that in the very near future. Be happy to answer any questions that you all might have. I can see from the look on your faces, my time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything to report from the committee? If not, our next regular reading's June 5th at 8:00 AM, and we have workshop on May the 15th at 6:00 PM, and I will entertain a motion to the chairman.
Actually, Beth, we do have one thing. We are having a, WUR is having an e-waste event at Seton High School on May 17th from 10 to 1, I believe it is.
Ten to one, I think I saw that.
Yeah. So, we have information out there, the advertising's going to come out in the next couple of weeks, so if you have anything for the e-waste, we're collecting that, those things at Seton.
A giant old projection TV from the basement's going to the.
Yeah. I'm excited. Clean out the cupboards.
That's right. All right. Motion to adjourn?
No.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.